All right. We're going to call this meeting into order if I have my microphone on. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. My name is Trevor Lobenstein and I'll be chairing this meeting. All meetings will be recorded by Westwood Media Center. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to record this meeting? And if so, could you please identify yourself? Seeing none. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The agenda is available at the back of the room. The meeting will follow the order on the agenda. The meeting will be civil and all people will be retreated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will precede the staff comments. The board members will ask questions of the applicant and then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it's time for the public comment period, the chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium. And once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. All comments and questions shall be directed through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments should be maybe cut short. First, are there any changes to the agenda?
Just one change. Item eight I had listed was Westwood Estate subdivision Hedger Lane. I had put that on for a lot release and changed to a tri-party agreement, but that's not ready to go forward tonight.
Okay.
So no action on that.
So if you're here for number eight, you can, you will have to wait patiently for them to return. Okay, the first item will be the request to extend an OSRD EIDR, Open Space Residential Development Environmental Impact and Design Review, approval for land off of Far Reach Road and MAP 3 Lot 023, which was approved on November 17, 2015. Is there anyone here on behalf of this application?
John Betts with Fields &amp; Thomas.
Hi, John. How are you?
Wonderful, thank you.
Good.
So I'm hoping to keep this very quick for the board.
I'm at it.
We were here two years ago for an open space residential development environmental impact design review. This is for land off of Far Reach Road, Summer Street, running parallel down here on the other side of Lee Plon. This land was looking at for four or five lots. The planning board, when we came in with a preliminary plan, said we'd really like you to pursue an open space residential development. So the applicant, Old Grove Partners, and the owner came back and agreed to do that. So this is just a three-lot residential subdivision. The applicant hasn't proceeded with the permits that, or executing the permits with construction out here at this time. They do own other property on Summer Street that they're actively marketing and they just don't want to go out here and have to construct the roadway, do the land disturbance to have the land sit while they're trying to sell other properties. So we're just asking for a two-year extension of this to give them the time to do that construction.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
It seems fairly straightforward.
I just saw that there was one mention of using less asphalt in the project. Was that part of the original?
Oh, there's less asphalt than the regular definitive subdivision would have had, or that was presented on the original preliminary plan.
So that's similar to what you had already presented before?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only question.
Now, this is a very successful OSRD project. We started with something completely different and came up with this, which reduces the amount of impervious surfaces and in general has a better layout and more land preserved and a lot of land being held as open space and being made accessible to the public. So this is a good outcome and so we'd like to see it get done.
Okay. Any comments from staff?
No comments. It's really the two-year timeframe is on the EIDR portion of this project.
Okay. Any comments from this end of the table or? Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? So, all right. I have a motion to approve the two extension of the EIDR for where are we here? Far Reach Road at MAP 3 Lot 23. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Two. Item two is a request for bond release for Fox Meadow Estate subdivision, aka Captain's Crossing, Gilbane Development Company. Is there anyone here from Gilbane who would like to chat or otherwise for Fox Meadow Estates?
I, they let me know today that something came up and they weren't able to attend. But if you recall, well, Brian wasn't here, but the other four members, last spring, the developer submitted a street acceptance request. So you did review the subdivision at that time. You had a couple of meetings on it. There are some outstanding items that you reviewed the night of town meeting. On May 1st last year, they had to add some clearing for the emergency access to provide some legal documents and some clarifications. So at that time at town meeting, you did, we did verify that those items were done and then you updated a recommendation for street acceptance and it was accepted in May. So the road is now officially a public road. Normally you would have reviewed the bond before that time. I think we just really didn't review it as it came right down to the wire at town meeting. So we had left that item outstanding. The bond, we have, you're currently holding $200,000 and the bond is set to expire at the end of this month. So they are requesting that all of it be released.
Okay.
So I believe at this time all the work has been done. There's been, I know, some discussion soon after town meeting about that emergency access. And, you know, I did go out there and checked with the fire chief and that it was still suitable. There was, I think, the property owner that was next door where the easement for emergency accesses that comes out onto Fox Hill Street had concerns about people going in there and some dumping. So we did allow them to put up a chain, but it had to be a breakable one. So at one point there was other items and there was a lock on it, but that was later removed and it had, I think it's held with a plastic tie wrap.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board?
No questions for me. There's nothing, there's nothing left to be done, basically. Like the tie wrap thing, that's the, that's not their responsibility. And the path is the town's responsibility, like the stone dust thing.
Along Gay Street, right. Right. That was something, there was path that the developer had originally paved and graded along Gay Street. And at that time it was what they would do once and then the town's responsibility to later maintain.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions either. I remember this one quite well from last spring, so are there any, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to release the funds in the amount of $200,000.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks very much, everybody. Moving on to item three, 401 Sandy Valley Road. It's an A&R plan, approval not required. This is at assessors MAP 15, lots 14 and 27, to reconfigure two lots into three building lots.
Let me just, so what you have in front of you is...
Oh, is there anyone here?
Oh, sorry.
Is there anyone here to?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
Nick Potts, Land Investor, real estate consultant. I've not inherited or not viewed this plan, but I've been working with Jaeger's, the town owners, for some time. And I was actually just expecting to pick up a new door and our plan. And I learned actually that we have here now some concerns possibly about the condition of Sandy Valley or the frontage. So, oh, sorry.
Right. I could explain a little bit. So the plan shows there's two lots currently exist. It's 401 Sandy Valley, which is this one that's further back and has frontage on Sandy Valley here. And then the owner also owns a lot that's undeveloped on the front portion. That's currently one lot. But this plan proposes creating a second lot from where this one in the front is and then shifting the lot line from the one in the back over so that they all have the minimum 175 feet of frontage and the lot width, however...
Yeah, it was really the, I'll just say it was the lot width that was the reason we had to borrow a little bit of area from this lot. It was just, I mean, it was within, it was just a couple of inches, really. It was, it was amazing.
That line over there moved slightly?
This, yes. Yeah. So right now you have two lots. So the large, the large lot here, this is owned by the town. It was originally part of this and it was sold to the town maybe sometime around 2002, 2003.
Okay.
And then there's this lot and we just had to basically borrow a little bit of this lot to create this lot. And it wasn't a matter of not having sufficient frontage. It was just a matter of meeting the minimum width requirement. And so this plan, all this is all...
So the line moved a little bit south, otherwise.
Correct.
And other than that, the other line at the, at the west end is the same.
The same. Yeah.
So it was an existing lot and when was that created?
I don't know when it was, well, this, this lot was created in 2002.
2002, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it was doorspan.
And so you're really, you're basically taking that lot, dividing it in two and moving the line on one end of it slightly over.
Very, very slightly. So I'll also mention that this is all registered land, so this has been through the land court approval process. We've been at this for months at this point.
So I had looked at this and it looked okay on paper. However, I went on a site visit today and realized that this is, these lots are at the end of Sandy Valley, so past the paved area. So there's no physical access to this lot or to this new lot. And before these lots are, where these new lots are being created and the requirements for the planning board's endorsement essentially saying that subdivision approval is not required is that there's physical and vital access, which is what's missing here in this case. I just, I have a couple of photos that I took today. Have you seen? Let me just pull them up. So this, where that fire hydrant is, that's right around where 401 ends.
That's going to be...
So then...
It shows here, but it's going to be right, right about here. And then it goes to gravel and leads to Lowell Woods.
Gotcha.
Yep. So here is the driveway to 401 and that's where the pavement ends. And that's a view with that drive on the far side of the photo is 401. So essentially, I think this does not qualify as a plan that could receive your endorsement as approval not required because it doesn't have the physical access to those lots.
So, so this just came up on my way here. We weren't expecting this curveball at all. And I think we're a little bit confused because it, Sandy Valley Road is an accepted public way. It's been in existence well before the 1940s. In fact, the engineer, Pat Arnau, was flipping through plans while I was driving here and he has a plan at least back to 1935 that shows it as an accepted town way. It's maintained by the town. I understand that Sandy Valley Road, this gravel portion is graded at least annually. There are somewhere around maybe 40 cars a day that go up and down from the Sandy Valley, from the Lowell Woods parking lot. It's plowed by the town throughout the winter. So it seemed to us to certainly meet all the tests of vital access for purposes of an A&R plan, which as I understand it is not a, not tech, I mean, generally, yes, it's a, it's a subdivision, but technically it's, it's not, if I understand that correctly.
But having that...
I have to agree with you. The road is entirely passable. I always thought that what was, that was made, it was not the road itself, but the fact that you couldn't get from the road to the property, like a cliff or something was there to separate the two, that made it, the frontage inaccessible. In this case, the road is, it's a town road. It's maintained by the town. It's entirely passable and there's nothing there to stop anyone from going in there. And I don't know how we could deny it because in, it was in 2002.
It was 2002 that endorsed this, this lot.
We endorsed that and nothing, nothing like this came up at that time. So if we, if we endorsed that one lot being put in there, we can't really say no to making that one lot into two. I'm not crazy about there being two lots or even one lot there because we went through a whole thing with this property, but it's, I think it's a legitimate A&R.
Well, I mean, the pavement ends before you get to these new lots.
But, but the pavement didn't go to that lot when it was created, which was, when it was created from the larger lot and it had, you know, the, the frontage was the same frontage we're talking about. That frontage hasn't changed and we proved it then. Now we're just taking that frontage and creating two lots out of the one lot.
Yeah. Our understanding from the very beginning is that it, pavement is really kind of irrelevant for purposes of an A&R. The fact of the matter is, can, is it on an accepted public way? Yes. Can you get there all year round? Yes. Do you have vital access? Yes. And this isn't a definitive subdivision. In that case, I would certainly understand why there would have to be road upgrades, but this is an A&R division.
Okay.
We don't know if that portion of Sandy Valley is an accepted public way all the way down that far.
Oh, it, it is. Yeah. Metro West and engineering did all that, that research. Yeah. It continues all the way down to Lowell Woods, which is off of this plan.
Yeah. I'm sure not that many people are happy at just having two more lots, because this was undeveloped, so we haven't developed the first lot.
The, yes, everything is vacant right now. That's correct.
Nora, do you have a comment?
The plan would actually discuss Sandy Valley Road years ago, the prior application for 401 Sandy Valley Road, and determined then that it was not an accepted way beyond maybe 250 feet off of Gay Street. It was an acceptance that was recorded then. So if you have different information, it would be great to see that because the town's records do not show Sandy Valley Road as an accepted public way beyond a certain period. It doesn't, the area back there is not, never been accepted.
250 feet is not very much.
It's not much at all.
No.
And I have that on the record. And I remember it's a very, a very, do you remember this came up when they were talking about repaving it and whether they could do drainage work to repave the road? It was in a very pitted condition. And there was concern about whether the town could spend Chapter 90 funds to do the work because it wasn't, there was no evidence that it was a public roadway. And so I believe they were only allowed to use the Chapter 90 funds for the front portion of the road. And they did not do a full drainage reconstruction. They just put in a swell and paved it as far as they could go. And then I think the town used funds to pave a portion of it all the way up to 401 Sandy Valley Road. But that pavement stopped there. And what's beyond that is a trail. It is not, it's never been accepted as a road. But, but I believe the accepted road, according to the town's records, stops far sooner than 401. So if you have documentation showing otherwise, that would be great for us to see.
Yeah.
Well, this, we did, the town made this a scenic road. And of course, we didn't mention the length of it, but it is a scenic road. And we did have a scenic road hearing when a house is way more than 250 feet at the end there and went through that whole process.
So I don't think...
At the time, and again, that was not brought up during that scenic road hearing.
No, but I don't think Abby's making the argument that none of the road is a way. There's a difference between an accepted public way and a way for the subdivision control law. And I think Abby's point was that when the pavement stops, you might be able to say from 250 feet till the end of the pavement is a way of some sort, not necessarily an accepted public way, but a way of some sort which, which is treated as a road. But beyond that pavement, the rest of it is not treated as a road. It's treated as a trail, conservation trail.
So are you saying 250 feet from where the pavement ends or 250 feet in Gay Street?
I'm saying that I believe it's a publicly accepted road to a certain distance. And I can't remember if it's 250 feet, 300 feet. There is a distance. John Verterelli had done the research back on the 401 Sandy Valley Equestrian Center who's being reviewed.
This is prior, prior owners to Jaeger's.
Right. Right. So a while ago. And then it was researched after that when they wanted to do drainage work. And there was no evidence of any records of any other acceptance past that certain point. So I think there are two issues. One issue is that the accepted public road stops well short of 401 Sandy Valley Road. But the issue that Abby is bringing up is that the pavement stops at the driveway to 401 Sandy Valley Road. And you may be able to say that that is a way usable as a road. And clearly it's usable to get to 401 Sandy Valley. Question is, is it usable once you get past that driveway where you're trying to establish frontage for these two lot, two new lots? And I see nothing that indicates that it is three days of road beyond that point. It appears to be a trail.
And did the planning board make a mistake when it?
I would say they did, yes.
Did they do that?
What's, I mean, there are 40 cars a day driving on, I mean, 40 cars a day don't drive on a trail. It's a, it's a gravel road. I just drove on it tonight.
So the scenic road extends to where? To...
Scenic road is described by name. It doesn't have parameters.
Yeah, but we say what, so...
Sandy Valley Road, wherever that is. So if an application came up and an applicant wanted to argue that it was not within the public right of way, we'd have to determine what the public right of way. Scenic road, the restrictions on stone walls and tree cunning pertain to the portions that are within a public right of way. So you'd have to establish where that public right of way is. And the records that I have now show it not even coming close to 401 Sandy Valley Road.
So, so the owner of the property where we had the scenic road hearing didn't bring that up? And you're saying he might have been able to do that?
Or it could have been that that scenic va, that scenic road hearing was closer to Gay Street.
Well, it wasn't that close. It was way more than...
200 feet.
250 feet. It's, it's only a couple of houses down and he was, his house was quite a bit further.
So who owns the, this section between the, at the end of Sandy Valley Road? Isn't this owned by the town?
I would say it's owned by the people who owe the fee in the lots that are on either side of it. That's generally how land, even if it's in an accepted right of way, that's generally how it's owned. So that if the, if the public acceptance were ever abandoned where there is one, then the land reverts to the property owners. The town is one of those property owners.
But the...
Not the property owner on, immediately across the way.
But it's not, it's not an easement or anything. I mean, it is a, anyone, it's a, public access to Lowell Woods is across this stretch of, of land.
Right.
Which leads to a parking lot where there are cars and the trailhead and a gate, which I presume the gate is there to be open to the, if some, there was an emergency, an ambulance could get into Lowell Woods and get somebody out of the woods. It would seem that that's pretty good access. Like if you're able to, if it's, you got a parking lot and the provision for emergency vehicles to get on in, in there. I mean, what would make it better, I guess, would be the thing. Like what would, is it not wide enough? Is it, if it were improved? You know, what if it were paved over and, you know, it seems to be wide enough to be a road? Like I guess, what would be the point where, if you think it's not a town which access for the purposes of this A&R, what would it take to make it that? What would be different?
To upgrade that area and the road paving or they could file a subdivision application. So it would be essentially a definitive subdivision application rather than this A&R plan submission. And then during the subdivision, you could review the standards of the road.
Excuse me. Nora, do we know if the town plows to the parking lot at Lowell Woods? Do we know that?
They do, yes. One of my partners lives right across the street from the driveway to Lowell Woods and he sees everybody going in and out every morning. And he was the one who kind of quoted to me about 40 cars a day and says that the town plows right down and plows out the parking lot because people use it all year round. Right. The reason there's a lot of resistance to pave this is the fact that we're talking about a 540 plus or minus foot stretch at, I don't know what the linear foot cost would be for paving that stretch of road, but that would be an astronomical expense for two residential lots at the end of the road.
I don't believe the building commissioner would consider either lot buildable. Even if you do create two lots instead of one, without a paved road in front of that, it will not be considered buildable. So we've gone, we've run into same situations as Alstom and Town where there may have been a street that was laid out at one time but never improved to the standards required and they could not be built up from it until they improve this street. So I don't think that's, I don't think that's a factor of your decision. Your decision should be based on whether you believe the way extends past these lots and provides frontage or not. But the building commissioner could require it to be paved even if you do allow it to be a street or a building permit could be issued for the lot.
So I guess there's a lot of ambiguity here, I guess it's safe to say. So what we're saying is that the town has no record of this being a, a...
A public way.
A public way.
Certainly a public way.
But that's not, the paving is not a criteria for, is pavement a criteria of a public way or not really?
It's not a criteria of a public way, but it's usually a condition that's required before the town meeting accepts it.
Sure.
Make it public.
Right. Right. Okay.
Who could give us guidance on this?
Well, again, Pat Arnau, the engineer who prepared this plan, told me on the phone tonight that he had plans at least back to 1935 that showed it as a town way. So one recourse is for me to check back with him and see what his research shows.
Right. So I don't want to jump the gun or, does anyone have any other questions?
We've got a shared driveway.
No, no.
That wouldn't apply because it's a public access to Lowell Woods, right?
Right.
Well, a shared driveway is not to circumvent the subdivision actual. So you would still have that, so that could be one option. It may not qualify as an A&R plan, but that could be another option. You've had subdivision applications with a shared driveway to alleviate the upgrades and improvements.
Right. And it would, and actually, yeah, because there would not be, the shared driveway can't provide the frontage.
Yeah. So you still need that frontage.
It wouldn't be helpful, but it's not a shared driveway. It's, it's always been a right of way. Whether you would call it a public right of way or not, I don't know, but it's always been there.
There's been a root of some sort that got you through Westwood into Dedham, going back quite a ways. That root was discontinued at some point and it was never improved. The driveway for it.
Got it. Got it.
I've certainly driven my car up and down it a number of times.
So, I mean, I see your, Abby, I see your recommendation for denial here. I, I guess I'm wondering, what are other options? I mean, I personally don't feel comfortable pursuing approving this. Would we help you guys if we continue this hearing until the next, until our next meeting to just get, maybe get Mr. Arnau in here with some of this evidence to sort of clarify?
I think you would, since we're, with the A&R plan, you have this 21 days that you have to take action.
Yeah.
I think in the past what you've done is determined it incomplete for the following reasons.
Yeah.
And allowed the applicant to resubmit.
Okay.
That documentation.
This 21 days is gonna...
Then, so they would essentially, this would be your decision. But then the applicant could resubmit for the documentation that you could consider at another meeting. So you still need to take action.
Right.
On this, I think in the past.
Okay.
And given, given that, I mean, I'd probably like to see the original, where you created that lot. If my signature is on it, I don't think, I wouldn't be voting contrary to the way I voted before, so I...
There wouldn't be any... There wouldn't be any record of that, would there be record of the minutes from that meeting or?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The endorsed plan.
But, but the endorsed plan will, will have signatures on it and probably one of them is mine.
Okay. So I guess.
So essentially, I think, you know, you could change my recommendation. We determined to be incomplete for the following reasons.
Yeah.
And the applicant, um, should submit these for the planning board for the consideration of the application.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, you need evidence that Sandy Valley Road is an accepted public way.
Right, or one of the other qualified ways that the planning board could approve under the subdivision control law.
Yeah.
Yeah. That makes the most sense.
Well, Abby, with that information, would, would we become the finders of fact whether or not this is a right of, a public right of way?
Well, it's the applicant's responsibility to demonstrate that to you. And then you would need to make your decision based on that information.
Yeah, I think it does say that on there.
I mean, it says Sandy Valley Road, public width varies.
Scenic road.
And then Pat even included in the application that it was a public road. He was citing this. I'm just gonna see if there's any, any other notes on there. See any other notes other than public width varies? And the width definitely varies there.
Right.
I mean, it's a, it's a country road. It's.
And it's scenic.
You know.
Okay.
And if it used to go all the way to Dedham, then?
Yeah, it did. And then it was cut off by 128.
I would ask, yeah. At what point did it not cease to be a public right of way if it used to be?
Well, it's clear that at some point it ceased to be maintained, but that's, might be a different.
Well, we don't know how well it was maintained way back then anyway, but.
Sure, it was above.
I find it hard to, I mean, I think, I think we should continue this and all. Because I, although I see the, it's a terrible condition there, but, um, we are, it's supposed to be access to Lowell Woods and everything. And, um, you know, a better question would be, why don't we, why isn't it better maintained and everything? And then if it were, it would seem to be decent access, but.
Yeah, again, my understanding is that DPW is out there roughly annually, you know, re, regrading the, the gravel surface and the access to Lowell Woods. Right now, it's kind of all rutted out because we've had a lot of rain. The ground is starting to harden up, but, um, it's used.
So we need a motion for incomplete?
Yeah.
Application?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion for the A and R plan of 401 Sandy Valley Road, uh, to be declared incomplete?
Maybe for the following reasons that we have on here, we could, or?
The following reasons.
Or the applicant has not submitted.
Has not submitted enough evidence for the following reasons. The lots do not conform, uh, conform, beg your pardon. The lots do not front on one of the qualified ways as specified in chapter 41, section 81L, the Mass General Laws. Number two, the plans submitted with this application are not shown on a way approved in accordance with the subdivision control law. Number three, Sandy Valley Road does not have sufficient width or suitable grades to provide safe and adequate access to a public way. And number four, vital access to proposed laws 16, 17, and 18 as specified by chapter 41, section 81M of the Mass General Laws does not exist on this portion of Sandy Valley Road.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor of this finding, um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Makes sense?
It makes some sense, yeah.
So if you, if you could resubmit or submit some new information, the next board meeting is, um, November 28th. So we'll be in touch about when to submit that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's all right. This is kind of a hour curve ball for us as we are not expecting this.
No, thank you for coming at least, so that's, that's helpful. But yeah, please try to come back and, on the 28th so we can wrap this up. Do you want to take these, take these prints back with you?
Uh, those, you can keep those.
Okay. Okay. Next item is 1561 High Street Reynolds Farm, a modification of special permit drainage plans. Abby, I understand you have a introduction to this one?
Right. The applicant is here tonight. We asked the applicant, um, to come in. This is, um, a, this was a special permit application that the planning board approved in 2012 for senior residential development for 12 residential dwellings. Um, the project's been under construction for some time. Many or most of the units have been sold. And, um, when I recently checked in with the applicant about finishing the work as to the approved plans, the applicant informed me that, um, he's not intending to do some of the work that we understood to be approved by the planning boards specific to drainage and the drainage improvements that were shown on the approved plans. So the applicant, so we asked the applicant to come tonight to ask for a modification from the approved plan. So I'll let him explain that.
Hi, I'm Musto, I'm the owner. Uh, the plan that Abby was referring to was approved by the planning board on, um, the original plan was approved on February, uh, February 6th, 2012. We subsequently came back for revision, um, a third modification, which was approved on February 25th, 2014. And included in that modification was a set of plans right here. And if I may.
Is that part of what you wanted to do?
Silence everybody, huh? So anyways, here we are. We're going to page six of the plan. Page actually, we're going to page five. Page five shows the drainage schematic. It's, uh, High Street. This is the, this is the existing roadway. This is the existing drainage system. Plan illustrates that we're proposing to come out of an infiltration area into an outlet structure, into a drain manhole, drain manhole one. Continue it up along the, the green strip to drain manhole one A. And then into a new drain manhole, drain manhole one B. And as part of this, we were going to replace the existing inlet structure because it's just not adequate. So that's the plan. Now, what came up was, the issues came up, well, wait a minute, Ed. It appears that you're running, you're, are you replacing the drain pipe across Stanford Drive? And I said, no, we're not. We're not replacing it. The argument was made, well, it appears that you're replacing it because it was in the same color. And as I said to Abby, whether it's green, red, blue, or yellow, what is identified as structures with distances and elevations and, um, is on the plan. That's what we're proposing to do. Now, if we go to page eight of the plan set, this is the plan and profile for the drainage leaving the leaching galls. Drain manhole one. Drain manhole one A. Drain manhole one B. And there's our, and there, it shows the drain manhole one B tying into an existing 15-inch outlet pipe, which is the pipe that crosses over Route 109 to Stanford Drive. I think it's in plain view, plain view, English on the plan. It was never our intention to replace the pipe crossing 109. I mean, if that's the argument, every time you tie into a sewer, a sewer main, does the argument become, well, you've got to replace the sewer main from one end of town to the other end of town?
Okay, I think I, I think I understand. And it sounds like the DPW's been out there to scope this pipe and everything looks like it's perfectly fine.
Yeah.
There's no reason for it to be replaced, okay.
Right, well, since, so the, um, in the 2014 last revised plans that you approved, those 2014 revisions were after a conservation approval. So at that time, we really didn't know the capacity of this existing pipe and if it was going to be to function appropriately and be suitable for this development. But when this came up a couple of weeks ago, I did check with Public Works and they did check on this drainage pipe. And we were able to check on that and, and found that it is functional. So it does not need to be replaced at this time. But the reason we asked the applicant to come back to you was because when we looked at the plans that were approved back at that time, it looked like the pipe going across the street was to be replaced.
Okay. So what are we trying to find here exactly? Are we trying to find that this is a minor modification to the plan?
Yeah, essentially, you're being asked if, if you think this is a modification. And then if so, your acceptance of this modification.
Okay. Yes.
I don't think there's any modification. It clearly states that it's an existing 15-inch outlet pipe.
Right, and this is all part of the original application.
What is, what is this one in the middle here? Because it also has this little one, because it also has one A and one B. Double catch basin, one A.
Finished grade, existing 15-inch pipe. That's the one going across the street?
So that's also, that's like a, the same picture that you have on the right there.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the plan and profile. Shows you the slope of the pipe, shows you the type of pipe, the distance on the pipe, and the, and the connecting structures that are part of that drainage run. And just for the record, the drainage, that's good. There's arguably no drainage going into this pipe. As you recall, Steve, when we submitted the first SRD plan for this site, we went through some very extensive borings on site to determine the soil qualities of the site. And arguably, we're holding back more water on site. All of our water is being infiltrated into the ground. And it ends up somewhere down on the backside of Stanford Drive. All of our soils are type one soils, type two soils. The water's going into the ground. There's going to be very little flow through this pipe getting to this existing 15-inch outlet structure. Very little, if any at all.
Nevertheless, we did have quite a bit of discussion about that pipe.
Yeah.
And I don't know what point it was in the hearing that we had that. Have, has it, has, I'm sort of concerned that until now that we, that it's coming up again. Has that pipe been functioning or, or hasn't it?
Well, this has come up because all the work is, the drainage work has not been completed at this, at this point in time. And so I was following up on when this work is going to be completed. There are a number of structures on the site. The landscaping is still outstanding. So the water is not flowing the way it's designed on the final approval.
Currently, all the water that's on High Street is flowing into the existing outlet structure, which goes under, under High Street, crosses over to Stanford Drive, and goes on its merry way to the swamp down at the end of Stanford Drive. We're not, we're arguably not, we're not introducing any more water, okay? Albeit, this pipe, this, this, this portion of the, of the, of the drainage has yet to be completed. We're, we're, we're in the process of getting ready to start that. Tom Planner brought it up. Her proposition was this pipe is, should be replaced, shown as being, and our, our position is no. We're not showing it to be replaced. And that was the whole purpose of this meeting, Ken.
Got it.
So we're not looking for any modification.
We're just discussing.
Plan speaks for itself.
But I'm still asking.
Go ahead.
Because it was brought up that the, the pipe where it flows out into the area down there was not functioning well because it was clogged, there were roots, the pipe was broken. Is that still the case or has it been fixed?
I don't know.
Whether it's by you or, I mean, not by you, but.
It's really not our issue.
Not your issue.
We're only responsible for our site. We're tying into the public, public system.
When will the rest of the, um, the rest of the work be done?
Well, Dave, Brian, we're in the process of doing it. We've been planting trees the last couple of days. We're trying to finish the trees, the landscaping. And then we're gonna get into the drainage this coming week to try to tie the drainage in. And then hopefully we'll be done within the next three weeks, four weeks? Maybe a month?
Cool.
I think it's been four years. It's taken me a while. We work hard at it. I'm not a big operation. I don't have 20 guys working for me. We try to do a good job. Sometimes we're not, you know, we're not quick to the trigger, but we do try to get the job done. I don't think, I think, as, as Mr. Gloss had designed the engineer, the drainage on this, I don't think we've had any issues of drainage. People complaining that their base, before there were issues, their basements were being flat out, there was water building up in their back yards. Since we've designed this to their, to Mr. Gloss's specs, we haven't had that issue. I've seen water in that detention basin twice, maybe in four years. See, I've seen it one day, gone the next day. So we've got great soils up there. That water's just leaching into the ground.
But is that?
So if any, this is really, really over, overdesigned and overbelts.
But that detention basin you're talking about is a temporary one?
No, it's a permanent detention basin.
You, you, you've done that already?
Yeah.
So what has, what hasn't been done?
We just have to tie the last portion.
Subsurface infiltration basin, is that installed?
What was that again?
The subsurface.
That's what we have to tie in. We have to tie that in.
But is, is that?
Install that and tie it into the drainage system.
But it hasn't been installed yet.
We're, we're gonna be doing that in the next couple of weeks.
It hasn't been installed yet.
Yes. But the soils that are there are all type one soils. That water is just, just going to the ground.
Yeah. Okay. So if we agree with you, we, we, there's nothing to us to do, correct? Okay. I mean, I, I don't, personally don't have an issue with following what seems to be in the drawings. It's, I mean, others can speak, but I don't.
I guess, I guess you should make a finding that a, um, that a modification is not needed, I guess.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I mean, our, the reason we expect it to be completed is because on the plan view, the way it's, it's drawn.
Meanwhile, there's a.
Mr. Chairman, I drew the plans and I can guarantee you, there was never any intention of replacing it. We followed the recommendations of Carl Baldoff, sorry.
Could you introduce your, I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself? I know who you are, but, yes.
46 East Street in East Wapo. So prior to myself being involved with this, there was another application and another engineer, Fred Fishner, and Carl Baldoff, who was your town engineer at the time, reviewed it, went out to Stanford Drive, went out to High Street, surveyed all of the drainage structures, cataloged their, um, appearance, you know, what sort of maintenance they were in, and put that in a report that I actually submitted to you. And there was no reason to replace the 15-inch pipe. So, and to answer your question, Mr. Olunoff, so I was a municipal engineer for a long time. And let me tell you something that's very difficult to do, and I'm sure that other municipal engineers will tell you the same thing. And that is to allow private party to work on someone else's private property. So there was, and there still is, as far as I know, a problem with the drainage at the bottom of Stanford Drive. The pipe is shallow. It was probably very poorly installed. I believe it probably sits on loan. It doesn't, it sits on a soil that's allowing it to be brought up and down by frost in the, in the springtime, most likely. So it's in difficult shape. But what the previous application before I was involved with seemed to be asking was for Mr. Musto to go onto that private property, grant it in a town easement, but it's still someone else's property. The town has the right to maintain a drainage pipe there. They don't necessarily have the right to, you know, allow someone else to go in and work on it necessarily. So I've found as a municipal engineer over many years as a municipal engineer. So I've found, as a municipal engineer, over many years as a municipal engineer, that that's a very slippery slope and you just don't want to get involved with that. If the town wants to go in and fix it, in fact, at the time, what I told Eddie is, just tell the town, how much is it? $30,000 bucks? Here's a check for $30,000. Go fix it because you can't, first of, here's one problem. You're asking for a private person to file for a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission on property he doesn't own. You can't do it. If the owner doesn't sign it, that's the end of the story. So the town didn't appear to be willing to go in and fix it themselves. So what I did, and if you look at the drainage calculations, and as Mr. Musto said, we reduced not only the rate of runoff, but the volume of runoff by at least half in the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm. So the remedy that we proposed to the town was rather than go on someone's property and fix their drain pipe is, we're going to handle whatever we can reasonably handle on our property. So that being said, that's how it worked out, but again, I can guarantee you, there was never any intention and there was never any reason to replace that 15-inch pipe.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions from the public, I guess, on this item, given there's a few public people out there other than Mr. Musto? Okay. Do we actually, do we actually need to vote on a finding or do we just need to state it?
You should probably at least make a motion.
Okay. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Well, the motion is to be, what?
Um.
It's a minor modification?
To find it.
Or it's consistent with the original.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't have to take any action at all.
Say, I don't know why we're talking about this at all, frankly.
Well, I'm concerned that you wrote a letter saying he's in violation of some of the parts of the special permit. That's, that should be a concern to the planning board.
Nora, you want to? Can I expand on that?
So the reason you're being asked to weigh in, in whichever way, if you think it's a change to the plans or if you think that's what was intended, we're just trying to get you to weigh in on which it is so that Abby can grant her approval based on what you believe the plans call for. The reason a letter went out saying that there's a violation is because the drainage work is not complete. This approval was granted in 2012. Construction began in, I believe, 2013. Houses have been in existence and lived in since early 2014. We're now approaching 2018. And the most significant portion of the work was the drainage work, and it has not been done. So the, Mr. Musto is in a situation where he is not permitted to do any other work at the site on the one remaining unit that's there until all of the site work is complete. And the drainage work is defined by the plan and there was a discrepancy on what is required. So just going back a little bit, I know, there was a little talk about Carl Baldoff. He actually reviewed a prior iteration of this plan. He was not the town engineer at the time. This was reviewed. John Bertorelli was here in the beginning. He left and we had beta reviewing it on behalf of the town engineers. Carl Baldoff, when he reviewed the earlier version, which started out as a 24-unit senior residential development and got down to 19 before it was denied by the planning board, that one actually did call for this pipe to be replaced, for a 15-inch pipe to be replaced by a 24-inch pipe. And that was at Carl's request. That plan was never approved. And when we moved into the next one, Diane Beecham, who was the town planner at the time, set forth a whole bunch of conditions that Mr. Musto should look at in going from the failed SRD to one that could be approved. And one of those had to do with the drainage. And when it was looked at at that time, because the development was reduced from 19 units down to 12 units, acreage was taken off. The original development had used three single-family lots on High Street as part of that. They were removed. So it's a smaller lot, it has less drainage, and Mr. Glossa designed it in a way to accommodate more of the drainage on-site. And it was determined then that we did not need to go to a 24-inch pipe. The 15-inch pipe would be sufficient as long as it was a functioning pipe. And the understanding I had at the time, when this board approved it, was that if the pipe was found to be functioning, it would not need to be replaced. If it was found not to be functioning, it would need to be replaced. So it looks like Todd Corchin has now reviewed it, sees that it does, it is functioning. So I think you could feel comfortable knowing that it's not replaced, but we still have the question of whether the plans called for it to be replaced or not. And that's what we need you to weigh in on tonight so that Abby can grant approval when the work that's shown on those plans is completed.
So did Todd inspect it from one end to the other, the outlet?
No. He inspected the portion of the pipe that went under High Street.
Okay.
That, just that portion, not once you're down Stamford Drive. There may be a clog in the pipe when you go down Stamford Drive. I don't believe he camered it all the way through. He camered the part from, there's an existing drainage structure that's on the development side of High Street that is shown on that plan, undoubtedly to be replaced. And then there's a section of pipe that goes under High Street from that to Stamford Drive. And Todd had a camera crew look at the section that went from the existing outlet structure towards Stamford Drive.
Basically, the width of High Street is.
Right. And determined that it's old, it's not great, but it's functioning.
So, sorry, just one second.
So what you seem to say is that we were supposed to have him replace any part of the pipe all the way down to the end.
No. My recollection, my recollection, this is from 2011, and there was a lot of discussion about the old plan and the new plan. There were different engineers involved. My recollection is that the plan called, showed a portion of pipe and the discussion that the planning board had at the time was, one of the residents of, I believe it was of Stamford Drive, raised a concern that the pipe might not be functioning and that there was overflow that was coming into their yards. They were concerned about flooding. And the board at that time said that if the pipe was in need of replacement, it would be replaced as part of this plan. And for that reason, we have interpreted those plans to require a replacement of that section of the pipe. Having had Todd look at it, I don't believe it needs to be replaced, but I still believe the plans did intend for it to be replaced. If the board doesn't believe that was the case, then they should state that was not the case. If the board believes that that was the case but is no longer necessary, then they should modify the plans so that it doesn't need to be replaced. I don't think under any circumstances today we're looking for Mr. Musto to replace the pipe. It's just a question of whether the plans called for him to replace the pipe.
Well, having looked at these plans now for several minutes, I see no indication that these plans indicate any replacement of that pipe. If we're taking these plans at face value.
In fact, it states existing 15-inch outlet pipe.
Right.
That being said, is there any other, from the original, well, the 2012 approval? Is this all of the plan?
Yes. I mean, it's not the whole plan set. We have the whole plan set, but I, that's those two sheets related specifically to the drainage.
Okay. This is what's pointed to the discussion, these two sheets.
Yeah.
And the only evidence we have of anything even coming up to the existing 15-inch pipe is this notation on the cross-section. This is page two. Correct?
Or sheet eight, I think.
Sheet eight, yeah. Sheet eight. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. One more. Yep.
The economic director brought it up.
Um, if. As you said, I'm not allowed to seek any inspections, get any further certificates of occupancy, do any work other than what's on the plan. If someone could show me in the SRD regulations where my ability to make a living with my builder's license, with my construction supervisor's license, where I'm not allowed to make a living, which is what in effect the town planner and the economic development officer have done by, in their letters, by stating, I cannot pull any permits, I cannot ask for any inspections. If someone could show me in the SRD regulations where that can be permitted, I'll accept it. Now, in 2005.
I think we're pretty close of finding here. I don't think we need to go down this path. I mean.
But again, I think this is a two-part thing. I mean, there's the finding that he doesn't have to replace the pipe, and then there's how we acted on the letter that the town planner has sent to him, saying that he shouldn't continue any work until he finishes the drainage construction.
All the construction. All the work.
So those are two, it's really two issues here.
Right.
And the concern in my, you know, the reason it's come up right now is because we're nearing the end of a construction season and getting into a winter. There's one unit left. So the question comes up, and I've heard from many of the residents living at Reynolds Farm over the last two, two, three years, of when he's going to complete the work, specifically the landscaping. So what happens if that last unit, someone wants to buy that in January or February? How can I proceed at that time if all this work isn't done? So that's why I've been encouraging Ed to do that now, or should have already been done, but before the end of the construction season. And it's getting very late for landscape.
So has that been, I mean, I'm sure the neighbors are concerned about the landscaping, but the town should be more concerned about the drainage and overflowing out to High Street. And has that been happening?
No, it has not been happening.
I fail to see the problem here, guys. Like, I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little frustrated here.
Let's close out the first item. Let's just close that out.
Close out the finding, shall we?
Yes.
There's two findings. One is that based on the inspection from the DPW director, we would find that the pipe can function with the new capacity. So I think that's one part of the motion. And two, I don't see evidence in the plans that there was a requirement to replace that pipe. So I think it can proceed as it is, and it should proceed with all possible pace to get it done before snow.
I concur.
I second that.
Okay, I have a finding and a second and a concurrence, I guess.
Well, we had that actually before, I think, but.
Yes, we did.
So we're voting now just on what the plan says, which is.
Just tying a bow.
That the pipe doesn't need to be replaced.
All right, so I have a finding and I have a second. All those in favor of this finding?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now, the second concern still is there is to, I mean, is he really going to get this done so that we don't have any water problems over the winter? Is this finally going to be completed in time?
Mr. Chairman, we've had no issues with water up there at all.
It's not like you have now.
In four years, no one has complained about water, okay? We're absorbing all of our runoff on-site. We're absorbing all the water from Blueberry Lane on our site and we're putting it in the ground. We have had no issues with runoff.
Mm-hmm. And that's on a, with a temporary, that's with a temporary detention basin?
It's a permanent detention basin.
There's two basins. There's an above-ground basin that takes care of, as Ed said, it's a culvert under his driveway from Blueberry, from the backyards of Blueberry. And then there's the upper units that, in the upper part of that driveway, that drain into that. And then the lower part of the driveway, Ed's installed all of the catch basins and he basically has dead-ended the pipe into the gravel that's under the ground, so, you know, I can't crawl under there and see. But apparently, it's enough to offset, you know, the water coming down the driveway. It gets into the catch basins, gets into those pipes, and it's enough to get it into the ground. So, I mean, I can substantiate what he said. I've, not that I'm up there every day, but we have been up there obviously often surveying and doing whatever we need to do as built and all. And I've never seen or heard of anybody complain to me, and I've never seen any instances where there was evidence where there was, you know, water leaving the site and creating problems. Clearly, water does leave the site from town to town, from time to time. But one of the above-ground basin is built, he's yet to build the below-ground one, which he's doing now. It's not a huge undertaking.
Right.
So it's something that'll take a week or two.
I think, I actually like, all that is, I think I'd rather be hearing like, what's it going to take to get it done? And then, oh, it doesn't need to be done. It's kind of what it seems like.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I mean, it happens to be functioning, but it's not functioning, it's not even built as it was designed.
We should have a time in about a month. Less than a month, we'll have all that infiltration in the ground.
Mr. Musto, if you could just use the microphone when you're speaking, please, so we can keep up the recording. Thank you.
So I mean, I know another case is like.
We'll have, we should have all that site, that infrastructure in within the next month.
Will that include the landscape?
Well, the landscaping is pretty much done. We're doing the trees now. We're putting, we're planting all the, we're planting all the plants, the trees. The units, they're, all the units have lawns. They're not in the best of shape, but the lawns are done. So yes, we'll have it done, Mike. We'll have it done.
But obviously, the area where you have, yet to construct the subsurface infiltration basin, that hasn't been landscaped because you have to install that.
Well, we, well, once the, once the, the galleys are installed and filled in with, with the fabric over them, yes. Then we'll put loom over that and that area will be finished as well. And I just, and I could be wrong here, but I didn't see anywhere in the decision where it stated that things had to be completed by a time-specific date. I don't know if it's in there. It talks about, you know, we've been moving, we've been persevering, moving ahead, trying to get it done. We're trying to get a lot of things done. But I don't feel like I'm in violation of the SRD special permit.
If I could point you to condition one?
Yes? Reasonable diligence.
Condition one of the original decision from January 2012, which was repeated in all of the multiple modifications to the project over time, says, "Except as modified by the conditions and findings hereof, the project shall comply with the project plans and with all conditions of prior approvals in all respects, and the applicant shall pursue completion of the project with reasonable diligence and continuity. It is no longer reasonable that people have been living in these homes. Every building has been completed. None of the site work has been completed. Throughout the process, from 2013 until today, we have been asking for the work to be done. Whenever a subdivision is constructed, the site work is done first. The finished paving is not done until all of the houses are done, but the essential site work is done, especially the drainage. It's unacceptable that this drainage work was not done. So whether or not water is running off the site, and I think we could have differing reports of whether it is or not, the fact is, the drainage is not completed according to the plan. And until that drainage is completed and all of the site work is completed and attention is paid to the portions of the project that do not directly result in payment to Mr. Musto, the project is in default. The project has to be completed as planned, not just selling off all the units. Remember, this is a 12-unit development. 11 of the units have now been sold off. There's one unit remaining. We're not talking about holding the project up. Under normal conditions, we would not have allowed even the first building permit to have been issued until the site work was done. That could have been the case. The building commissioner could have waited until all of the work was done to allow even the first building permit to be issued. He did not do that. He allowed work to continue and we were expecting it to progress reasonably and with due diligence. That is simply not the case. It's almost 2018. This project has been in works for over five years now. The residents on High Street who have this in their backyard have not had the landscape screening that was required. Under the SRD, there's a requirement for a 30-foot perimeter buffer. And this application, the applicant was allowed to, because they needed to regrade some of the area behind those homes, they were allowed to remove the existing vegetation. There's nothing there. You have aerials that show you what this has looked like, what these property owners have endured all this time, not to mention the property owners who purchased those first 11 homes and are living in them. It has been a significant inconvenience to the neighborhood, and the drainage is our greatest concern. But all of the work needs to now be completed before the 12th unit is allowed to be occupied.
So could I ask what else?
I'm okay with the 12th unit. I've never, I've never said, okay, I'm selling it. I've, I've taken the position, I'm not going to sell it until all the site work is done. So no one is trying to snatch it and sell it. I agree.
Mr. Musto sold the 11th unit despite, despite.
And I think if you read the letters that were sent to me by the town planner, it clearly states, "The final certificate of occupancy will not be issued until all of the site work is done." Not the second to last, the final certificate of occupancy.
That was for the final building. There are two units in one building. This has been going on for quite a while. This has been going on for quite a while. There's no more work that's being permitted. The building commissioner will not issue another inspection, another decision, until the project is complete.
So is that holding you up? The building commissioner is doing that?
Me?
Yes.
Well, I, I, I don't, I, I think it's an unfair...
Yeah, but is, is it actually holding you up?
Yeah, I guess that's the question.
Well, I can't get any, I can't get any rough inspections or fine, or rough inspections that are remaining on the last unit because of their letter. You know, they're telling me I can't have any inspections.
Are you ready to have that inspection?
I will be ready to have an inspection, yes.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it's a matter of a race between when you need your next inspection and you finishing this, why don't you just, we can just do both by you finishing this, and then you'll be able to get your next inspection.
That's my plan. All I'm saying is, there's no permission in the bylaw that says...
Well, I think we can go along with that.
I wouldn't call it a race. It's been going on for five years.
But at this point, at this point, we're maybe, maybe it's to the finish line.
It's a very slow race.
Abby, can I ask exactly what is before the board right now? What are we supposed to be deciding right now?
Nothing.
Well...
Can we, I mean, you, you've made the decision. Can the planning board say that the, that the building commissioner and, and the town planner can hold off on enforcing that until we give him a few weeks to finish the drainage and the landscaping?
It's not, I don't see that that's in the planning board's purview. The planning board issued a special permit, and the building commissioner is responsible for making sure that the applicant complies with the special permit. So unless you wanted to amend your special permit to make that a change, but I think that would require a public hearing, and the, and all of the abutters and all of the residents of the 11 units that are now occupied, I'm sure we'd have something to say about that.
So there's nothing we can do, then?
Well, I think you, you mentioned that the, you said that the project was in, the project was in default because of the failure to proceed?
For failure to complete the site work.
And I mean, what does that, what implications does that have for us, for the, as far as this?
It has no implications for you. What it means is that the building commissioner will not allow the, the building work to continue at this point until the site work is complete.
So the planning board can't change it?
Yeah, I still don't understand what's, I'm with you, I don't know what's before us.
There is nothing before this board that I can see.
Yes. I suppose we could overrule, we could try to overrule that, but I agree with it.
You can't. The, the building commissioner is, can be overruled by the zoning board. If Mr. Musto wants to apply to the zoning board to appeal the building commissioner's decision under the zoning bylaw, and under the decision, he can do that. If he wants to apply for an amendment of the special permit that allows all of the building work to be complete and eliminates the need to do the site work, he can try that, too. But that would require a special, a public hearing, as would a hearing before the zoning board, and each of those property owners on High Street and on Reynolds Way would have the opportunity to appear at that hearing.
So it seems like we've, we've cleared this obstacle over the issue of this pipe. And so that should free you up to get it done and not have anything else to do.
And I'm not asking to waive on that last unit. I haven't asked anyone to release it. I, I would just like to know that I can get inspections, albeit, maybe I can't get a final certificate of occupancy inspection, but I'd like to at least finish it and button it up, so it's there. The building, but the building department doesn't have to issue the occupancy permit until all the other site work is done, and I can accept that.
And I think we're just requesting that we focus on the site work.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, there will be no inspections. There will be no additional building work permitted at all until all of the site work is done.
There you have it, Mr. Musto. We have to do the site work.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Next item.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is 565 Gay Street, a pre-application hearing, or meeting, sorry, in formal discussion to review two alternatives to create two buildable lots.
So I'm going to recuse myself from this, since I'm, by virtue of the Housing Authority, do you have to leave the table or just...
Yeah, I think you, usually we go sit in the audience, I think.
Yeah.
Give me some room.
We need to find a better way to save these files to my iPad that come up with.
I have, I'll put them up on the screen as well, but those are probably easier to see.
Same.
Oh, this one. I don't know when this one will come around again.
Yeah.
Didn't take long.
I was hoping it wouldn't.
I was going to tell them to fall down before this will come around again.
Okay.
Second driveway, I'll gaze.
All right, you have two different drawings up there.
Well, I can, I can start with that one.
Okay, no, I can go, that's the next one, I believe. Is that right? Is that the, no.
I had the other one.
I have it. The next one.
Yeah. They're the same, they're just in, one's in color. So, for the record, John Glossa, Glossa Engineering, 46 East Street in East Wollpole. Tom Garrity's here, who is owner of 565 Gay Street. You may recall, a month or so ago, we tried to get an A&R plan signed, but sort of ran into the same thing as the Sandy Valley Road. So, and we did come in front of you maybe last year with a subdivision. So there's an existing house, 565 Gay Street here, in a, my memory, about a seven-acre lot or so, back here. Did go to the Conservation Commission because that was an issue, whether the wetlands were flagged in accordance with the DEP and the town regulations. And we did get what's called an ORAD, so it's an Order of Resource Area Delineation. It's an official document. It's good for three years from the day the Conservation Commission issued it. So these wetlands now are sort of set in stone as far as the DEP and the town conservation goes, and your regulations are tied to their regulations as far as determining upland area of lots. So what we're showing here is sort of a conventional layout under your regulations. There are some waivers required. I can grab my sheet if you want, but I did, even if we did a conventional subdivision, we still could not do it without waivers. And there's two waivers that would become, that could not be avoided. Those two waivers would be Section 447, the offset distance to a lot line outside of the subdivision. So it's supposed to be 40 feet from this lot line. And because of site distance requirements, and whether they're your requirements or just common sense requirements, believe me, you don't really want to move these entrances too far away from this lot line, because you just don't have the, the site distance looking back towards 1A, looking back in this direction. So you do want to have these driveways here. So in this case, I laid out the subdivision road here, and, you know, it's up to you guys, it's not up to me, but I just don't understand, or I just wouldn't recommend to anyone to build a full subdivision road for the purpose, really, of constructing one house, really what it comes down to. So in this case, just simply showing one lot here, meeting the requirements of 80,000 square feet and 60,000 square feet up land, building, meeting the build factor. And then a second lot here, again, meeting the frontage and area requirements in this building, essentially replacing the, the building that's there. It's pretty much in the same location. So this driveway is, I believe I showed this as a 14-foot wide driveway, or a modified road here, and then just simply having the second lot, lot two, just connect directly to, to Gay Street. So there already is sort of two curb cuts for that one house there now. This is in a little bit different location, and this is a little better. So I just thought that that might be one option that you might have. If I did do this as a conventional subdivision, you'd have your, and I'm not sure what the requirements are for your width of roadway, you would have your 22-foot wide street here and your cul-de-sac here, and your two driveways coming off of that. But I would still not be able to meet the 40 feet to the lot line outside of the subdivision. And then the other issue is whether, for these purposes, right, which is a little different than the A&R definition, I guess, whether we need to be 600 feet from Gay Farm Way. 600 feet because Gay Street, Gay Street is a major street. So the way I read it, it just offsets 600 feet, just the way I read it. I could be wrong. So that would be sort of one alternative. And then the second alternative, if some of you remember from the, it's the discussion, the discussion we had with at least one of the neighbors when we had our public hearing for our sort of proposed subdivision about a year ago, and Phil Perdis from Beta went out to look at the site and sort of claimed he almost got killed at the intersection of Gay Farm Way and Games, Gay Street, because you can't see to the left when you come out here. This goes up over a hill, and you literally can't see. And one of the abutters down here expressed his concern about that also, and I talked to him about that, and said, well, you know, we could provide a second sort of access and egress, excuse me, from Gay Farm Way to Gay Street that would alleviate, you know, the necessity of coming out here and having to, you know, look to the left and have that short site distance. So, you know, the buildings here are in a similar location as they were in the other alternative. And what we would do is bring a 25-foot right-of-way with a 20, here, with an 18-foot wide paved width through from Gay Street to Gay Farm Way, make some sort of an agreement with these people who already have a homeowners association, or they have some sort of a requirement that's in their deeds regarding the maintenance of it, plowing and that sort of stuff. And, and then just have our two driveways off of that street. Again, we're not 40 feet from the abutters lot line. We don't have 600 feet to Gay Farm Way. And then, as you, if you read here, there's a host of other waivers in both instances that we would be asking for. I guess if, if neither one of these meets your, or nothing meets your requirements, we would just come back with sort of a conventional subdivision, and it would have those two waiver requests, and we would try to go forward with that. But I thought that these two alternatives might be something that might pique your interest a little bit, and maybe, I'm not saying these are perfect, and I'm not saying that, you know, I certainly would listen to anything the board would, would like to see here, but I think both of them have some merit. This one might sort of provide some, some relief for, for some abutters to the site. So I guess I can answer any questions you might have, or listen to any comments that you have.
So what is the standard subdivision you were talking about? Do you happen to have that one with you?
As far as what it would look like?
Yeah.
I don't, but I can sort of tell you what it would look like. It would look like this. It would look like this, and it would have a 22-foot wide street, and it would have a, it would have an 80-foot diameter paved cul-de-sac. So it would be a big sort of mass of pavement there. There is...
What would be the difference between that one and this one?
This one's just showing us 14-foot wide driveway going into this option.
Right, but we can do that anyway, if it's standard subdivision. We could always waive down the, the width requirement.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking you for.
Okay, that's basically waived down.
Right. But let me just, there is a third waiver here that would be on both of them, because I don't think you could do it. And that is, at this location here, your requirements are for a 40-foot rounding, you know, at this, at this, at the street here, and I'm just showing a 10-foot rounding. Because if I do a 40-foot, then that's going to push this over here, 40 feet, and then you've got, you know, your 50 feet, and before you know it, you know, I'm back over here where there's no site distance.
You're talking about the edge of the actual pavement or the edge of the right-of-way?
Well, just the edge of the right-of-way right here. Your, your requirements are for 40. I think, you know, for, for the purpose of serving one or even two houses, I don't think it really needs to rise to that, to that amount, to that, you know, large rounding.
So why, after all you said about placing that driveway so critical, do you have a second driveway that's further down the street?
Well, I think that's sort of the preference of the owner right now. He'd just prefer to have them separated. However, if you're, if you came back to me and said, "Look, John, this looks fine, but we want this driveway to come in off of here," that's the way we would show it. But, you know, my philosophy is, we'll kind of show you what we think makes good sense to us, and, you know, you tell us what makes good sense to you, and we'll either meet in the middle, or we'll do what you say.
Is there some minimum, is there some minimum separation between driveways that would want to be observed, or not really?
No, we don't really...
Not for driveways.
Not that I know of.
So my question, my Peter Nor, that you got a really weird-shaped lot in here.
It's very strange.
And how does that seem to meet the, what do we call it, the...
Lot shape, lot shape factor.
Probably wouldn't, but that's something that you would...
Well, he's got the calculation.
No, he does.
He did the calculation right on there.
It's because it's so large.
And it did.
You know, when they get very large over the requirements, you can have a lot of, a lot of sides on your, on your, on your lot.
But that is waivable as well. So the planning board has the ability to waive the lot shape factor.
But it has to be less than 50?
I believe that's what it is.
Yeah, and this is 48 or...
Yeah, it does.
Right up there, if you look, one's 48, actually, I checked, it was 48.99, and the other one is 36 something?
Yeah, 36...
36, 36.87, and you'd think you were right on this one. It's 49.89, so it's, it's close.
I checked your math.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we did. That, that came up before and during the subdivision earlier in the year, and they did check it.
So I'm just, I mean, it's, yeah, I'm just concerned, is, what is it about our formula that this weird-shaped lot still came through and is just...
I think it's the size.
Generous.
Lots of, because they're so large, they're, you know, they're well above the 80,000-square-foot requirement. So that's what, you know, sort of brings it down to the requirement, to your build factor or whatever you call it, shape factor requirement.
Yeah. And I guess, given your, the wetland situation, you, you don't have a whole lot of lot, you don't have a whole lot of lot to work with from a just buildable area standpoint either, is what I'm sort of sensing, right?
Um, well, yes and no. I mean, there's actually three lots here, but we don't have enough for three frontages.
Right, right, right.
So on the one that's probably, you know, the one with the higher build shape factor there, which is Lot Two, that area... there, which is lot two, that area in the back is buildable, but I just don't know how you could reasonably get there. The septic system most likely would not go back there because of the, so it's kind of ledgy when you get back there.
So the basic question on both of these schemes is, right now, there's a historic house on this property plus two other structures which also could be historic. And so you would have to get a demolition delay permission from the, well, you have to go before...
Built before nineteen-ten.
Yeah. All three structures are just the main...
And the structure built before December thirty-first, nineteen-ten.
And that's true, definitely of the house. It's also true of the, what do you have, a barn and a shed?
I know this property is on the inventory and the last time when the subdivision came to you, the Historic Commission did comment that they'd like the chance to review the historical significance. So if it was proposed for demolition, that's what they would evaluate before demolition.
And so given that it's a historic house, which the Historic Commission is definitely concerned about, then why isn't any effort being made to preserve that house?
That's, you know, above my pay grade and not a historical house.
Put it differently, no efforts being made to keep that house in any condition. It's salvageable, so.
Yeah.
But that doesn't, yeah, that's not the logic that should be used in determining whether a historic house should be destroyed or preserved.
Yeah.
Tom Garrity, five sixty-five Gay Street. Structural integrity of that has been diminished prior to my purchasing. The two-car garage, which was once referred to on the back, we had a snowfall problem two years ago, in two thousand and fifteen, collapsed the roof. Structure was unsafe. Went up to the building department, I got a demo permit.
One of the last, not the last conservation, but prior to that, they wanted to make sure it was beyond the buffer. And they told me, not to cease and desist, but for lack of a better term, don't do anything more with it. So it's in a state of disarray. I've had a dumpster there for two years, you know, trying to take it down. There were two young kids in the house next door that moved into the town's property.
I'm not casting any aspersions, but there was never a broken window in the house. Every window in the house now is broken with rocks and the rocks on the side. Again, structural integrity of the home, you know, obviously they'd have to go through the historical and demo delay. I've saved many, many structures in the city of Austin on Cape Cod and Fallon. Never taken a house down. Never taken one down. Love to do it, but it's only twenty-five feet from Gay Street to noise level and everything else. I've been at this for four years. I've done everything the town has asked me. I've gotten special consultants, engineers and everything. And as Mr. Glosser points out, I'm only looking for one additional lot on the six-eighth of the house.
But the house you're showing there, which will replace the existing historic house, is about, looks like this is the same distance to the Gay Street.
There's a little kind of envelope that John has laid out there. It's not quite exactly, but...
Okay, so I mean, so you're looking for just tonight, you're really looking for a little guidance, which you would prefer, so.
It's like, we like A, we don't like B, we like B or we don't like B or we don't like neither one or, you know, why don't you try something else or why don't you come back with a conventional subdivision?
Doesn't B run into the same problem we have with the last one?
B is the one, being that Gay Farm Road is not a public... No, 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 we wouldn't be asking that though. We would be laying out the street as a public street. The town doesn't, it can be laid out as a public street. The town doesn't necessarily have to accept it.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'll start over again. So this would be laid out as a public street. We're not coming in under an A and R, we'd be coming in under the subdivision control law. You would sign the plan, subdivision, under the subdivision control law required, you're signing them, they get built to the specifications that are shown on the plan that you dictate to us or your consultants dictate to us. But in the end, you'll bond it, you know, it'll go through the process as if it's going to become a public street. But in the end, and in fact, you can even write this into your decision, that it never becomes a public street and that the abutters can never ask that it become a public street. So it is a tool that's in your tool bag, so to speak. I know you've done it here in Westwood with other subdivisions. We do it often in other towns. I've done it many times in Walpole for similar situations, taking a lot, making a one lot, a two-lot subdivision essentially, but one additional house. They reduce the construction requirements and then sort of the trade-off is it's never going to become a public street. But because it's laid out under the subdivision control law for the purposes of the law, right, of the regulation, it's a public street. You can get a building permit. So we're not asking that Gay Farm Way become a public street. We're just giving those people the opportunity to use this street if you think that that's something that would be in the town's best interest and in their best interest, I guess. If you'd like me to submit something from these people, whether they want that or not, I can do that. But I know that there's at least one person who saw a big advantage to this. And I know it kind of looks like it's in a weird spot, but one thing I'm trying to do is sort of, what I like to do when I do roads is follow a contour line so that we're not kind of going up and down. So if somebody finds that the location's not all that palatable, we can look at that too. But one thing, as I said, and not to beat a dead horse, if you went out there and just looked, if you go down to the corner of the property right here, you'll see that you really have excellent site distance in both directions. You can see forever to your left and you can see adequately back, probably three hundred and fifty or more feet to your right. And, you know, I'm not knocking the people on Gay Street because I'm sure I do the same thing, but they get on Gay Street and they start going pretty fast, you know. So I think it gives an opportunity, you know, to maybe make someone's life a little bit easier, someone...
And who would maintain that?
So it would be privately maintained and that's why I said if these people wanted to join in, right now, if you read their deeds, they have a requirement in their deeds to sort of pay into like an association for the maintenance. So I would assume that these people, then they would all join in and they would also share the maintenance of this. If somebody down here says, hey, the heck with it, I don't want to do it, then theoretically they're kind of blocked from coming out here. I mean, it would be a civil matter, it wouldn't be a criminal matter, but, you know, if someone had, if they were kept driving through there, someone would have to get a lawyer and tell them, hey, you can't do that, you're not paying into the association. Similar to the people on Gay Farm. If somebody decides, hey, I'm not going to pay up, you know, to have the road plowed and whatever, then they join in and get a lawyer and they sort of force them to go.
The other thing that I noticed when I look at this plan is, so then you have that one lot where it's surrounded by that new way, Gay Street and...
This is the affordable housing lot. And, you know, again, we would, you know, we could come up with some plantings and whatever. And I'm not really sure of their situation. I think they come out the same driveway. So they might be interested in saying, you know, hey, it's not a bad idea. Maybe we should have our driveway right here instead of down here.
They back down a hill onto Gay Street.
Do they come out the same here?
They come around, but in the middle.
In here?
In the middle, it comes down.
I could look.
Do you have a rear driveway with the capacity of four vehicles that then they have to go up Gay Farm Way?
Oh, it's accessible up to Gay Farm Way?
Two driveways, the one that goes up high to the garage.
Yeah.
And then on the backside, there's room for four parking, it's paved.
I was unaware of that.
But that way, I mean, they can come up Gay Farm Way. I've spoken to one of the neighbors down there and kind of talked about this concept.
I was backing out of that house a week ago.
You live here?
Yeah, absolutely. It's dangerous.
Now, the questions come up, I mean, do you have, I think it's come up, we touched on it a little bit earlier in the year about having the legal access to connect to Gay Farm Way. I thought there was some kind of restriction to that property.
Would you like to come up to the front of the room if you're going to keep talking? It's just, it's just a little...
That section of Gay Farm Way is privately owned under the deed for one of my neighbors down in the back. And he would have to give his blessing to, you know, which he's already verbally committed, say, if you need to do that, you've got my blessing, so. That being said, he owns that.
I think you might be talking about this part.
No, no, not the front part, the front part.
No, I'm talking about the part that's restricted.
The part that's restricted and...
I think it's here, isn't it?
I thought it was from the end of that lot out to Gay Street.
Because it's actually on this lot.
Yes.
Yeah, well, yes, I thought the front part is restricted and then also when we had the public hearings early in the year and this kind of came up as a topic of discussion, the other homeowners further back on Gay Street were really opposed to any kind of connection. So I think...
No, I don't think they were opposed. That's not my reflection on the meeting. And I've spoken, my neighbors, I live right on the other side of Gay Farm Way.
Well, then it would be something you would want to demonstrate to the planning board because you'd likely not, they'd likely not want to support an application or go too far into it if it hasn't.
I understand that.
We're not deriving our frontage from either one of these lots or from Gay Farm Way. We're deriving our frontage from this new way.
Yeah, John, let's just make sure we're using the microphones for the recording, please.
Yeah, sorry.
So, anyway, Abby, we're not deriving our frontage for this lot from Gay Farm Way. We're deriving it from this line here and this frontage we're deriving from this line here. So we're not, we're not sort of violating that restriction of using Gay Farm Way as our access or as our frontage. Now, we're just saying that we would lay out a way like this and if the person here who actually owns this, if the others need to sign off on that, then they would have to sign off on it. But if this person decides, yes, I would like to take advantage of what Mr. Garrity has proposed and allow a connection there and I'm going to drive out that way and come in that way, then that's what's, you know, we're proposing. If the other people say, oh, we don't want that, we don't want to go in that way, we don't want to be involved with maintaining this or whatever, that's fine. We're not abandoning this. They can still drive out there and, you know, have their roadway that they've always had and that they always will have.
And this plan also, so if the frontage is on Gay Street, then also the lot width isn't being met here.
Yep, I made sure the guy who works for me, Don, checked the lot width and the lot frontages on all of these lots.
So do you guys have a preference? I mean, well, I feel like there's so many pieces here, I don't really know how to render any kind of...
We don't really have a preference and actually if you guys want to take this under advisement and talk about it, I'm not asking you to jump on this tonight. I know it's, it might be a little complicated and, you know, it might be some stuff you might want to think about.
So what about taking that road which is a sharp left, sharp right, sharp left and just have it go straight back and do one left, so come back behind the house?
Kind of like this?
Yeah, all right. Now, before you say that we split the lot in two, you also have considerable wetlands there and it's always nice to get the wetlands out of the individual properties and sometimes set up a separate lot that's just wetlands so that the neighbors don't, the person, the owner of the house doesn't think, that's my property, I can do what I want. And they go back to where their wetlands are and get in trouble with the Conservation Commission because they thought it's their property, let's do whatever we have. We always try to kind of segregate the wetlands onto a, like a, what do you call it, an open-space lot that's, you know, that's owned in common, just so those wetlands have that extra protection.
Right. I don't think we have an issue with that. We can decide the mechanism...
You have enough to do that.
Oh, yeah. As I said, there's actually enough here to have three lots that would meet all of the requirements except frontage. There already is a conservation restriction on this part of the abutting lot. We can pull that forward and you'd have a conservation restriction on it to just, and it's up to you guys in the end, and we don't really need to go too far with this tonight, but, you know, to kind of cut it off and say it's...
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm bringing these things up so...
It's good if it belongs to somebody.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's another thing you could do.
I was surveying once and a guy came over and he dumped a whole bunch of stuff next to where I was surveying and he said, it doesn't, and I kind of looked at him, he said, it's okay, nobody owns this lot. So you don't want a lot that nobody owns because that's what happened. They fill up with tires and cans and stuff.
It wouldn't tell anybody.
But it wouldn't be that, yeah, it's just the opposite. It's a lot that everyone owns and it's not a lot that no one owns and that's how we...
Okay, well, we don't, we recognized early on that there was additional land here and we don't really have an issue with working on, working something like that at the board. So one thing I'm hearing is you'd like to see kind of a third...
Yeah, look at that layout.
Yeah, interesting layout. I think this circuitous road is a little unusual and it's kind of, I don't know who said it, kind of, it sort of landlocks the, surrounds the affordable housing lot in kind of a urban way, which is a little bit strange.
Plus you have it parallel to Gay Street, how far away would it be? So you have, you know, two roads parallel to each other, very close.
What's the distance there, the green?
Here to here, you're talking?
No, no, no. The width of the green is...
The green strip you created between Gay Street and...
Oh, here?
Twenty feet?
Well, no, just the path along Gay Street.
Oh, yeah, twenty feet or so.
Yeah, so you've got two roads twenty feet apart, parallel. So it's not always, you know...
I mean, you can see the issue with trying to do that. We did try to do that, but the issue is leaving enough land area for this lot. But let me take another look at it.
Well, it's obviously still bigger than the other lot next to it, so...
Yeah, I can, I can, I can take a look at it, I can, we can take another look at it and we could submit something to you and you can see if it's palatable to you or not.
Yeah. Good.
Thank you. Okay, any other...
Nora had a comment question.
I just want to make sure I understand correctly. There is no waiver-free option. There's no subdivision that's waiver-free.
Not that I can see, Nora.
So I just wanted, before Mr. Glosser and Mr. Garrity go and continue, I think it's important for the board to, not necessarily to take a vote, but each of the board members to give a sense. Previous planning boards have only considered subdivisions involving waivers if they were first presented with a waiver-free option that they didn't find ideal. So if there was a way to develop the land in a way that didn't meet all your goals and there was a waiver option that would make a better development, the board in the past has considered that. I can think of only one exception to that. There was one subdivision which Mr. Glosser was involved with off of Clabertree Street, six hundred Clabertree Street, where there was no way to have a waiver-free subdivision. It was to add one more lot and the board at that time decided to go along with it anyhow and it was eventually approved. But that was the only case. And so I just think it's important for, because you're new board member since any of these decisions have been made, for you to weigh in with your thoughts on whether you would consider developing land that otherwise cannot be developed without waivers.
Any thoughts from anyone?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious as to what are the waivers? What is the list of them? Because it does, the plan that you're showing right now seems, there's that Serpentine Road, it's very close to Gay Street, the way that it isolates...
It, it, the way that it isolates the, that lot at the lower right corner.
Okay, so I, I understand what Nora's saying and I'm not trying to waste your time. But, so I will submit a plan to you that will show, it won't be waiverless, but it will have a plan that would have the least amount of waivers. And off the top of my head, as far as I know, there are three, right? One is that there is just no way you can physically move the subdivision roadway a hundred feet, uh, forty feet away from the, what they call the outside, a, a lot line outside of the subdivision. Just can't do that because when I do it, I can do it, I can draw it, but the location of the roadway is just going to be so ridiculous. You, you can't see anything to the right because it goes down over a hill. The other one is that there's a requirement that the rounding, right, the cutback or whatever you call it, I call it the rounding, have a radius of forty feet. Well, I don't want to do that either because now I'm pushing the roadway farther away from the place with the site distance. So those are two of the waivers. And the third waiver is, and if I'm reading it correctly, and I believe I am, because, um, Gay Street is a, I forget the exact word, but we would call it a, engineer would call it an arterial street. Your regulations say that there has to be six hundred feet between two streets. So my new street is not going to be six hundred feet from Gay Farm Way. Now, I don't want to get into a big thing, but we already kind of said it's not a street. But it's a street, but it's not a street. But I, I wouldn't fault you if you said, well, it is a street, because the definition seems to...
Bad purpose it would be.
Yeah, right, there's two different purposes, okay? So I wouldn't... Pick our fights when we need to. So those would be the three waivers. But I'll draw it up, you can look at it and see what you think about that. And then I will draw up the other one. And then after all of that, you might tell us, hit the road, you know, we're, we're not interested at all, so. All right, we'll do that. Get it back into Abby as soon as possible.
Do you want to have opinions? So I'm, I'm most concerned about the historic house and know if it is being made to preserve it. So if, if that house was to be preserved, then I'd be inclined to grant waivers. But otherwise, I don't think so.
I guess my, I'm not sure where I stand on the waivers issue yet, but I think, I mean, certainly it doesn't seem like there's a waiverless version of this. I mean, if the lot is just going to sit vacant without some, you know, I think we should entertain something. I think I'm more in favor of only one additional drive if, you know, if at all. The, the double pairing driveway seems a little absurd. It would probably exacerbate, although you're getting, getting a better site distance position. I just think it's going to look unusual and probably create its own site issues with, you know, conflicting traffic. But those are just a couple of thoughts, I guess.
Yeah, I agree, that, the two curb cuts so close to each other at the, basically the apex of the hill there.
Right, so if I'm going to pursue this at all, connect, connect to this here, yeah, okay. I, I hear that, yeah.
Nothing additional?
No, so I'm all set, so I'll get those other, um, two into you, Abby, and then we can just, we'll go from there.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome back, Dave.
I guess that's all I can do left here. Coming, coming.
When are you going back to the symphony? That was so funny that we saw each other that.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
What are the odds of that? I've never been to the symphony before.
Oh, really? That's your first time, oh. There you go.
That was really good. Going to the burn tomorrow night. There's an awesome harvest by Mayan field Christian.
Hey, thanks.
Have you been to the burn? Have you seen concerts in the background?
Yes, I was present while we were there.
Yeah, oh, I see, yeah.
I didn't go there specifically.
Have you been there?
No, where is it?
So it's right in Davis Square.
What's next? Next. Next item on the agenda is town meeting zoning amendment, continued public hearing.
All right, so your public hearing has been open since you opened to that, your last meeting, October 3rd. You made a recommendation to FinCom at that time, but you should now close your hearing and make a recommendation to town meeting. So I prepared a draft one for you. So usually you submit, um, we, you make your motion, we submit that at the beginning of town meeting to the town moderator, and you'll give your written report. And then Trevor, as the chairman, gives a verbal report when called by the town moderator. So they were, um...
Right here, right, this?
Yep, I think the first one, the joint one, the FMUOD one, that's Article Five, the one with you and the selectmen, that was on earlier. That was...
I don't have those on.
Was that the begin, was there a pile of papers here at the beginning?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So there was no, during, during the discussions of the cap, there was no movement towards reducing that at all?
Well, you did comment that, um, you wanted to see it lower at the public hearing on October 3rd, but then...
But nobody, nobody on FinCom?
Well, the FinCom decision, there was written, mentioned that. And mentioned that some reasons why it shouldn't or couldn't be done.
Right, um...
I was really hoping that, that during those deliberations, that it would go down. Because I almost see, if we believe that ninety is about the right number in that area, then what's the point of it anyway?
Yeah, what's the point of the cap at all?
Yeah, what's the point of it? If we've gone conservative and said that this is the most that we think? Or is it greater than that?
Do you have a...
The max is greater than that.
Right, yeah.
I think it was a hundred twenty-three.
But that's, but that's under, it seemed like that was under extreme conditions where you...
That, that it was, yeah.
So in that case, I'm, I just felt like, I was really hoping that it was going to go down because it, it seems, um, almost pointless.
Could I just answer that? The, the reason that the article was put forth and you were asked to co-sponsor it with the selectmen, the reason it was developed in the first place was to respond to the unreasonable expectations that six or seven hundred apartments could be developed on either side of town, which was not the case. So I think we were clear from the beginning that the article was not designed to reduce the density. It was designed to clarify to someone who doesn't know how to read the bylaw, to make it clear to abutters and to potential developers what the limits were. So it was, it was never written as an article intending to further reduce the density. And I also just wanted to point out one more thing. When the FinCom reviews an article that comes from you, they review up or down what you've proposed. They don't change it. So if you, if the planning board had proposed jointly with the selectmen, a lesser number, and taken that to the FinCom, then the FinCom would have reviewed that up or down. But the FinCom doesn't substitute their language for yours.
Right.
So again, I think if, you should read the FinCom, uh, this decision or their explanation for their decision in the, uh, in the FinCom booklet that is sent out to everyone.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, but what, what other, what other bylaw do we have that the intention is to clarify a misunderstanding? I was really hoping that that number was going to go down. Now, I understand that they, that they, they supported that action, but I thought there was going to be further deliberation after us regarding the number itself. So I wanted those numbers to go down, but we're still stuck at ninety and ninety. And that's the conservative number that we think would be built anyway. So again, what's the point of...
And, and again, that point is explained, uh, in, in the FinCom's decision. It's been explained before by Nora and, and the selectmen.
But what are the, what are the bylaw do we have that, that the intention is that way? I don't think we have one.
I don't think so either.
So this is the first one in the history of the town?
Well, we have the University of McUssaville where we have the specific cap on the number of residential.
It's where, it's where...
But at some point...
But it could be greater than that down there.
Uh, no, we have a limit. So that was probably intended to ease concerns of overdevelopment.
This isn't to say that there's going to be ninety down there. This is just, this is just, at a point, just a arbitrary cap so people can understand that, you know, we're not going to flood the neighborhood. And just because it's ninety doesn't mean we're going to approve ninety.
Yeah, but we feel that conservatively ninety is the most you could do anyway.
But it doesn't mean it's going to happen anyway. It's a, it's a, to keep equilibrium in the neighborhood so the development can continue on.
Yeah.
You know, because if we shut it off at forty-five and all of a sudden there's thirty in there, then nobody else is going to develop and we're stuck back where we started.
Yeah, but they stated before, you can always go back to town meeting and change that number.
But again, now we're going to be moving backwards to move forward. That doesn't make any sense to me either.
That would be moving forward to move forward, yeah. I mean, I'm just, I'm just...
We'd be going backwards, we'd be going back to change how to...
I just wanted to stay my opinion on, I was hoping that there was going to be reduction, but...
I understand what you're saying, but this is where we're at.
And, and in the FinCom decision, there is a, a good legal point that was made, what would happen if we, if we made it too low. And, and I don't think we're, we're saying, okay, this is the most you can get. I think this is a reasonable number. So we're just saying, since this is the reasonable number you can expect, then let's guarantee that reasonable number just because people, uh, want to have that guarantee. And, and it, and it helps everyone to understand the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it puts an upper limit on things that if the previous idea, we were kind of, I mean, saying, if someone would say, oh, there could be hundreds, there could be like six hundred, and then we would, the idea was, well, but the planning board has discretion and we don't worry, we would never do six hundred, we'll only do five hundred or something. So this is, this way, it's like you've brought that back to ninety as the maximum that it could ever be. And the planning board can still say, we can, we still look at it and say, we see that there's twelve and then however there might, and there's some more. And we say, you know what, it's, it's, it's actually getting to be too much or something. The planning board could say, no more, before you get to ninety. But we would have the benefit of having a proposal in front of us to talk about versus just saying, well, let's, if we set it at a really low number, then there, we won't have the opportunity for even to consider something.
Yeah, and I'm not, and I'm not talking about a very low number, I just mean lower, lower than that. That's fine, that's all I have to say.
So, so sorry, Abby, what is, what is our process here? Should we, should we see if there are public comments? And then, and then, and then offer, and then offer, and then close the hearing and then do our, do we extend the vote?
And then you should vote on each article, yeah.
All right, so why don't we hear from the public right now?
Hi, Nadia Milasavlovich Fabrizio, 32 Webster Street, good evening.
Hi.
I think the comment that Nora just made was valid about FinCom is recommending up or down of the planning board's recommendation or vote, voted as, I guess. So I think it was incumbent on the planning board at, you know, when this was first introduced to bring the number lower. Because FinCom is recommending up or down on whatever you guys decided. So that's one of my comments, because I, I agree with Brian, ninety's too much. My second comment is, um, University Station. Abby, you just said, answer to Brian's question about University Station, where are in the history?
Right, there's a limit on how many residential units can be developed there.
But it was, it was only in the instance of University Station, right? Let's just say it was.
Yes, for that zoning district, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I'm not going to argue or debate the merits of the footnote that goes with these FMUOD districts, but that footnote that combines Islington Center and, uh, Westwood Center and University Station, it defines them all as FMUODs. I think University Station's totally different than Westwood Center and Islington Center. And those are my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think with that, do I hear a, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on our zoning articles for the upcoming town meeting?
Also move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Aye, okay, I think we're maybe a five of five. So how should we handle this now? Should we read, read these each and then ask for a vote, or what do you, what's your...
Yep, or at least take each item.
Okay.
Each article.
Right, so we'll take the first article, which is Article Five. This is the article we just discussed, the amendment to the zoning bylaw to add definitive caps of ninety to the number of residential dwelling units which may be constructed in the FMUOD six and seven, limiting those number of residential units to ninety in each. Do I have a motion to vote on this article?
As written, I guess.
I think you just said, how many in favor?
How many, okay, how many in favor of approving this article for town meeting?
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed?
Nine.
Okay. By a vote of four in favor and one opposed. The planning board votes to recommend that town meeting approve Article Five. Article Ten, which is to see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to the Westwood zoning bylaw relating to permitting cafeterias, snack bars, gift shops, and vending machines as accessory uses in the HB Highway Business Zoning District by amending Section 4.3.1, Table of Accessory Uses. Could I have a vote of those in favor of approving Article Ten?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? I believe that's none, so by a vote of five to zero opposed. We will recommend that article at town meeting. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to approve certain amendments to Westwood zoning bylaw related to various medical uses by amending and adding to Section 2.0 definitions and amending Section 4.1.2, Table of Uses. Does everyone remember what this one means? Sufficiently to vote. Just want to make sure it's...
Medical uses?
The definitions.
Just, yeah, just for clarity.
Revised definitions, added definitions.
Okay.
Straining out the definitions.
Yep, all right, could I hear a vote for those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for those opposed? Okay, I hear five to zero opposed. And finally, Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to approve certain housekeeping amendments to various sections of the Westwood zoning bylaw as necessary to correct errors or inconsistencies and to clarify such sections. Do I have a vote, may I hear votes in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? So we have a vote of five to zero opposed. How'd I do? Okay.
Good.
Abby, you need to, um, when you, the, the letterhead, is it the old letterhead?
It is, yes, 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 thank you, update that. Thanks.
So do we think when, so these will come up, so these aren't quite in order of the meeting, obviously, because it's like Articles Five, Ten, Eleven, et cetera.
Right, um, those are the articles, yeah.
Those are actually, those are our numbers, right, okay.
Um, no, these are...
Again...
There's other ones in between.
The pamphlet is, the, the FinCom pamphlet has been sent, sent to every household. The FinCom pamphlet has been sent to every household. It contains the articles and numbered as such.
Oh, you should have received it last week.
And it gives their opinion on whether they favor it or don't favor it.
Yep.
Okay, it was in your packet, too. We could print one out for you. Did you get it by mail?
I got it on the website that you sent us.
Oh, okay. It should have been mailed. I think some people started receiving them last week. You did get it last month, okay. We could get you a paper copy if you want.
Oh, you can get it.
That has happened.
I got mine.
A number of...
Mine said Dave Atkins on it, though.
No, there's definitely, a lot of town, I mean, I've received things a week later. Just, I know other people in my neighborhood have received things like a week later that I think it's just the post office, different post office.
I'm sure we have some of our best people working on that.
I wanted to also bring up that Westwood Media Center did a video of, they did a nine-minute video going over all the town meeting articles, and it's using footage of people testifying at FinCom and Planning Board, I think. And so they put a really good nine-minute...
They tightened it up.
...thing together. It's great. If people watch that, in nine minutes, you can see all the articles summarized.
Looks great.
So we can just go online and on demand?
Westcott?
It's Westwood Media Center.
They changed the name last year.
Oh, they did.
Are they broadcasting this, or is this just...
Yeah, I think, I'm sure it's like...
It's on YouTube, and it runs on our channel as well.
Get those on the channel.
Great. Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
That'd be great.
I'll get that posted.
Okay. Okay, I think if we're good with the zoning amendment or the town meeting items, next item is review street acceptance request for Thompson Avenue, Westwood Estates subdivision.
All right, so if you recall, at your last meeting, October 3rd, you did make a recommendation. You had four conditions at that time. I just recommend you maybe make an updated motion to the Board of Selectmen to have a clean recommendation. They have completed those four items. It was, they planted the trees, they updated the as-built plan, they revised the O&M plan, and they were issued a certificate of compliance with the Conservation Commission.
Good job. Remember.
I was impressed.
So they did that soon after your last meeting.
Okay. All right, are there any questions?
Nope. That's great.
Okay. Do I have a motion to update our recommendation for approval to Slukman for this street acceptance?
I move you that we vote to release the remaining funds of 49,240.
Okay. Yes, but if you go to the street acceptance one first?
Oh, sure.
Thompson Ave, sorry.
Oh. We have to accept it first?
Well, I'm just updating the street acceptance.
Okay, I got it. So, oh, so I move the planning board vote to recommend to town meeting the, as Slukman and the town meeting?
Well, it's really, it's to the Board of Selectmen for a town meeting.
So I vote that we recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we find that all conditions have been met for the acceptance of Thompson Avenue, and that we recommend that the street be accepted as a town way.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so it looks like there's also an issue of a bond release.
Right, and the next one was they are looking for a release from the bond. You are holding the 49,240, which was reduced at the last meeting, for these four items.
Okay.
But I would just like to add that you, I recommend you release this with the condition that the developers submit a restriction placed on that undeveloped lot, that if that lot were to be developed, they would have to put up a bond for any possible damage on the recently approved road. That way, we'd have the fund. So condition your release on them submitting proof of recording at the registry of this restriction to me prior to releasing the bond, or tri-party agreement. So I know that they're working on that. Their attorney has been working with our town council in that exact language, and they're hoping to get that to me in the next few days.
Okay. Would anyone like to take a crack at this motion? It's written out here, luckily, so...
It's written out, but my actual motion is going to be for approve the bond release?
With a condition...
Right, I'll read the condition, but it's actually for a bond release.
Yep, to release.
I recommend we approve the bond release for Westview Estates. We recommend in releasing the remaining funds of $49,240 from the triple rate agreement subject to a condition that the developer, Cornerstone Corporation, record a document at the registry of deeds stating that a bond shall be posted prior to any request for foundation or building permits for Lot 9110 Thompson Ave, Map 29, Lot 113, to provide funds to the town in case the road is damaged. The funds will be returned if there is no damage. Proof of recording of this document shall be submitted to the town planner prior to the release of the funds in the tri-party agreement.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So released. All right, the final item was struck, so we just have other business. So the first other business item was 1,000, Project 1,000, Washington Street in Dedham.
Yep, let me just, I'll pull up the plans if you had a chance to look at these plans. Their public, Dedham's public hearing with the planning board is Thursday night. These plans, you had seen an earlier version that was submitted, I think, a few months ago, but they had made some revisions. So this is the October revised plans. Let's see. So this afternoon, late this afternoon, or in your packet, I started a draft letter commenting on that you should receive a copy of the updated traffic study so that you might want to recommend any signal changes based on that traffic report.
Abby, are there any implications? I was curious, there's like a tiny sliver of the lot is in Westwood. And I'm just curious, for the record, like what, how we handle things like that? Like if it was a larger thing with the planning board, would we be involved more directly? Or is there any impact on Westwood at all? Or kind of how does, how does that work?
Right, I don't, I don't think there would be any impact here. It says, you can see, it says...
Right along the extension?
This is the town line. So it's really in the street, the only part of the project is this real little corner of the project. So it's not really...
Is it really on the lot at all, or just a sidewalk?
It's really a little bit of the curb, a small piece of the curb in the landscape areas, only their project within Westwood.
Not even on the property itself.
If it were more substantial, I know there was another one that we had on Ally Drive, and I think we had a joint hearing, was there a joint public hearing? Or applications have been submitted in the past to both Westwood and Dedham before on bigger projects when the building...
There's also, is it 400 Blue Hill?
Yes, which is now One University Avenue. So the same thing, if there's development that takes place on the land that's in Westwood, then Westwood would be involved in the applications. In this case, the development is not happening there. That piece of land is really remaining unchanged. So there's no application to be had. If they alter the street, then they would need to go to the Selectmen as roadway commissioners to change that.
So this newer packet does that, that doesn't include any building elevation still, right? It's just a box?
At least, I didn't get any.
Okay.
They had some earlier ones. I haven't seen updated ones. They could be, I just, I haven't seen them yet. So they, their public hearing will be opening on Thursday evening. They might have more information at that time. But I thought, if you have comments, we could provide them to Dedham tomorrow.
The structural details I thought were lacking, just from that, that one page.
Right. Yeah, I guess I was, I was just more, my main comment was, what does a building look like? I mean, you know, it's sort of difficult to comment when it's really just a diagram, a site diagram, which doesn't really tell us much about what we're actually going to see on the site.
My biggest, a couple of concerns are, please, I hope they take this opportunity to get the sidewalk, I think it's on there, but to get the sidewalk completed so that it's a continuous sidewalk along that side of Washington Street. And it's like, there's this gap. I walk, I walk along there to work in the morning, and so I cut through, I go back to the abandoned gas station by the trailer and the boat, the kind of stuff. So it's like, that's one thing, I hope that, I want this to, there to be a...
So is it not handicap accessible, or is it just...
There's no sidewalk there.
So you either, you walk in the street and you're like having cars like...
Yeah.
Clearly, that would change with the, with the actual development of the place, but I just want to make sure that that's taken into account. And then similarly, the crossing there, the crosswalks and all, if there's any opportunity to enhance those crosswalks to make it safer.
Is there a crosswalk back at Hogan Tire?
There's a crosswalk in on the Westwood side between Hogan Tire and that...
The end of Gay Street.
Yeah, then across Gay Street. There's currently not anything on the other parts, because it's, again, it was a gas station with like drive-up.
Okay, there definitely should be, you know, crosswalk on each side on Washington Street. So we should definitely ask for that.
So, yeah, across the Chicaring from Washington.
They sort of have the ramps kind of centered like it's serving two crosswalks with one ramp, the one across Gay Street East and the one across Washington Street. So they, but we just want to make sure that they actually do put in a crosswalk.
Yeah, and I think it's Gay Street Extension, actually.
Yeah.
That's, it should be a sidewalk that you can then have a crosswalk across Gay Street Extension. I don't, I wouldn't think they would be planning a crosswalk across from on that side across Gay Street.
But there's no structures on the end of Gay Street Extension except for the backside of the office building that lets out onto Gay Street Extension. Am I correct in that? Any other buildings back there?
Yeah, the, so the exit from the existing...
Office building.
Office building comes out in a rather strange way at the rear of the building, where they come out on the right.
And there's two rooms up there?
Two or three, I think. Are there two or just one?
On the right side, like behind, directly behind Hogan Tire, and there are a couple of...
That front onto Gay Street Extension?
Interesting. See, I haven't done a Google map. That's called, they're calling that Gay Street and they call this other thing Gay Street Extension, this thing that comes off a lull. But, but what you're asking is it doesn't, I think it's really only one, kind of Google is not observing.
Yeah, this is not good because I think it comes back further.
Yeah.
And it ends up like, as a driveway, that house.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's quirkier than it suggests, but...
But we definitely want, there should be, at that intersection, should be four crosswalks.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be four crosswalks at all intersections.
I agree.
Okay.
I think they, that would be great, because I don't think that would be in the plans right now. It doesn't seem like that's, you know, what, you don't, that, you know, it should be, there's going to be with additional people living there. It's already, half the street is, you know, half the street is residential on the Chicaring side and everything, and you have the office building and other things. And so if here we're going to be adding, if you're adding a multi-use building there, you've got, you have, it is, there's going to be a lot of people around, so I think you do need a true...
Especially if they get some good businesses in there.
And you have a tremendous amount of traffic that comes up Gay Street in the mornings and makes that left turn. In fact, that's like always, that's where, it's backed up to Milk at times.
Nadia just mentioned that she had seen a 3D model on the Dedham website. Is that the old design? Or if you want to go to that, maybe you can take a look at it, it might get updated.
Okay. I only had the one, let's see, I'll just put on the screen, the one that I had received that, right, it didn't...
The rendition?
Yeah, that's all I had, but where is that? Okay, I don't have it right now. Oh wait, I can go to Dedham's page here. I didn't see it when I had looked.
Maybe there's like some agenda. Agenda was at the bottom, they might...
Yeah, open up the agenda and see what it has.
Did anything happen there? I'm not seeing it.
Two pages? That's one page?
Well, maybe encourage people to click around at home and see if they can find it. Nadia said she was on there today, and she did see a 3D model.
Right. All right.
Do you want us to send you any comments by like 10:00 AM tomorrow?
Yes, if you could, because I'll...
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think so, too. Again, without knowing more about what the thing looks like, I mean...
All right, so I'll, if I don't hear from you by 10:00 AM, I'll draft on what we have tonight, and I'll send that over by email, and I'll just call to make sure they'll get it.
Yeah, and I think your point about, because it is a Westwood traffic signal, so they need to inform us if any signal timing changes are needed.
And then, they are showing some parking spaces facing the Hogan Tire property. They show five feet in between, but it's not showing any landscaping, so I would suggest adding at least some shrubs or something. I mean, it's just facing the street, but some kind of buffer.
Yeah. That's a contaminated site, right? Isn't that site contaminated? Isn't that part of the reason why it's been sitting, baking so long?
Oh, probably, I mean, it's been a gas station.
I think it also, I noticed that it changed ownership prior to this, so maybe that had something to do with it.
I mean, generally, it's great that somebody's going to do something with it, it's such a eyesore.
Sitting there.
But, okay. All right. Next item was this approval of minutes from, 10:17 was scratched, but 10:03 was...
Right, I haven't done those, yep.
10:03. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the 10:03 meeting?
So moved.
Okay, oh, great. I have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think I have five ayes. Review of upcoming ZBA applications?
All right, I don't know if we had a chance to review, there is, I mean, I have provided draft comments. I had to provide them last week, but if anyone has any additional comments, I will update them. Yep, there is one, Blue Hill Drive was really a fence, raising it from six feet to eight feet on one side.
What else is that?
That was 409 Blue Hill Drive? And then the other one was an application on Church Street. It's an application for a variance for an addition within a rear yard setback. So this is one of the new applications with the new changes that were made last year to the non-conforming lot section. Previously, this could have been considered a special permit, but because it's creating a new nonconformity, they comply with the rear yard setback now, but they're proposing a garage attached to the structure. So it's, I think, I think they're looking for what, six feet from the rear yard setback when 30 is required.
It's just a garage?
I think it was a-
It's pretty big, the size of it.
Right, I think it was a two-car garage and then attached with a, like kind of a breezeway thing or so that they could go from the garage to the house indoors.
When is that hearing?
That is the November 15th meeting. I mean, so the comments I prepared would be, you know, try to let them know what a buy right option would be is if they had a detached accessory structure, if it's under 15 feet, they could go closer to the lot line, three feet from the rear lot line.
Okay. All right. Do we have any decisions to sign from prior meetings?
Just the, actually, street acceptance plan for Westview. If you could sign that, and then it will be provided to the Board of Selectmen. Or, I mean, Thompson Ave. Let's see, sort of thing, okay. So we have, the Mylars need the special pens that we have, and then- And then just regular, you know, black pen, probably best on paper copies. It's on, there's a few sheets because it's shown on two sheets.
Is that the special pen for the Mylars?
Oh, do we, hold on. Let me see, oh, here's.
That's on right there, obviously.
Okay, yep. Uh, yeah, plan it. And then Brian and Steve, were your emails working? I know, and Mike, have your-
I have a call today, so tomorrow it should be outside.
I've got a call into the, I-
Is it not working?
It stopped working, then the app deleted itself, then now I don't even know the password anymore, so. I've got a call to it too.
Okay. So you did call him, or?
I have my check.
I have my, okay.
You will do so tomorrow.
Password, because I'd like to move away from using your personal email so that you're all on the town email. And Steve, your email's working, the town email? Oh, yeah. Yep.
Do you want to jam?
She left, yeah. She escaped, exactly.
Sorry, opening.
Oh, really? Oh, sweet. Get one person through this.
All right, so as Dave, as Dave and Michael are finishing up their signing, do we have any committee reports to report out on?
Just open space will start soon.
Yep.
Oh, I missed one.
I think next, the town?
The first steering committee meeting of the open space plan is gonna, they're gonna have their first meeting, the steering committee, on December 6th.
That's right.
And then everyone save the date, it's far away now. We're gonna have a community-wide vision session January 18th. But the steering committee will meet on December and meet with a consultant to review that, to prepare for that. But that's kind of the date we're throwing out there as a-
Got it.
What was that date?
January 18th, it's a Thursday. We were trying to work with a consultant and try to look at planning board not meeting on nights of other, Thursday nights seem to be the least-
It's problematic.
Yeah.
We have our next isn't in center task force meeting tomorrow night, and we're going to review comments on the, on the comprehensive plan portion that were submitted clandestinely by all members, I guess.
Yeah, working towards updating the village center.
Also, they've already looked at individually and-
Well, that was the homework since the last meeting.
The homework assignment, so we'll see what happens.
So tomorrow night, the committee will be reviewing it.
When was the last time you met?
It's been-
A month.
A month, I think.
Yeah, we met last month, they took a break over the summer though.
Yeah, and then we don't meet again until January, so. It's an intensive season.
Has anything else happened with the Heart Tavern and the selectmen and all?
I heard there was-
The meeting was last week on November 2nd. Now I don't remember what the result was, do you remember that?
The selectmen discussed it.
Right, earlier.
Yeah, prior to last-
In September, and they had essentially not made any decisions and continued their review until last week's meeting on Thursday, the 2nd, and then, sorry, I was out Friday and, I'm sorry, I was out yesterday and I don't know what that result was. But they were, they were waving, kind of deciding what to do with the Blue Heart Tavern.
They're just not knowing what it would be used for.
Yeah, they had asked about use options and ownership.
It looks like the town would waive ownership, move, move ownership, transfer.
Yeah.
Okay, any other committee action?
No.
Hearing none, okay. Meeting schedule? Do we want to review that quickly?
If people had, Tom, I know we've, believe it or not, we've had a lot of people already asking when meeting dates are for January and February. So I had put together a draft meeting schedule for the whole year. I know none of us know where we're going to be on, you know, October in 2018, but I try to look at the dates that we already have scheduled, holidays. We have finance and warrant commission, they're scheduled through June. So I try to meet on opposite weeks of them because at times you'll be presenting to them. I know Steve gave me a couple suggested changes, if any. I had suggested January 9th, and Steve had asked about pushing it back a week to January 16th, which is a day after-
Yeah, well, I have a conflict because of the Atlanta meets on the 9th, so.
What's more important, Steve?
I mean, there's no, and you don't have, and you don't have another meeting conflict that night. I had just thought starting then, because January 2nd sounded a little too early, the day after the holiday. And then you only have one meeting in December, December 11th, so I was just trying to even it out, space them out, but it could be the 9th or the 16th.
I don't think I-
If anyone knows their plans yet.
Do you have more copies of that guy, or did I, I wonder if he has, or did you bring that, was that your one?
I, I brought it, yeah, I brought it.
Oh, but here, I have an extra one. But I will, after you approve it, if you think about it, I will send an updated one to everyone.
Everything looks fine through, from it.
So could we change 9th to the 16th on January?
It's okay with me.
It's fine by me.
It's okay with Trevor and Brian.
It's fine.
And the next one is-
Dave and Mike, does the 16th work for you? So that would be the first meeting of the year.
The 16th.
Can we cancel if it doesn't look good for me?
Actually, I'll be away on the 16th.
I assume you've already avoided the school holiday week, so.
Yeah, so I, again, that's why I kind of do the whole year, because I try to work around. I cross out all the school vacation weeks, so you don't meet on them. And then we try to avoid all the holidays, religious holidays. So January, I guess, it's up between the 9th or the 16th.
16th, I'll be away.
I'm fine either way, I don't have a preference. Stick with the 9th?
Yes.
Going once, going twice?
Okay. And then Steve also noted he had a conflict with April, with April 3rd, and suggested pushing it back to the 10th. Which, there was no conflict for meetings, I don't, I think I was just trying to space them out from, in March is when you have two sessions of public hearings with the FinCom. So in March, I scheduled two regular meetings, but the second one, if we just keep tentative, so that way if you don't have any applications, you don't have to meet two weeks in a row, we'll cancel it. Because it has the potential to have, one, two, three, four, five, six meetings. And to get a total in March, so I was trying to just space it out. But you, you can, you're free, meeting-wise, either on the 3rd or the 10th.
I can do either.
Okay, so want to go with the 10th then?
Yeah, let's go to 10th.
Okay.
Which month?
Wait, April. No, wait, is that what you wanted, Steve?
It's the 10th.
Yes, the 10th. Okay, so change April, April 10th, okay. Then, you know, if you want, we could usually in May, the first meeting in May, you could just do a double check on the schedule, if you don't mind if we post this now, but then in May, just kind of reconfirm it based on vacation plans and stuff.
When is town meeting in the spring?
7th.
Yes, so it's, it feels a little bit later this year, it's May 7th. And then Steve, just thought, one more thing, either we could potentially, I had listed, I had just suggested one in July, two in August. But you could move the August one up a week further to July 31st if you want to. So essentially have two in July and one in August.
Usually that's the way we do it.
Yeah, I think it has-
Yeah, that's the way we do it. I, I think it's fine, it's so far off.
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking about July. Or, Janice, you away on one of those?
Yeah, I'll be away on 31st.
But whatever date works better for people, we can make it work, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't, at this point, I can't.
Okay, all right, too far away. Okay, then, then I'll just say July 31st, since that's more consistent where we've done, and then I'll do the minutes for that meeting.
It does, means they'll potentially disappear on their own, so.
Okay, yeah, so we have often canceled one of the July meetings, okay. All right, so I'll send the schedule out to everyone after.
All right, any unreasonably anticipated topics?
Yes, we're, we're meeting on Monday, the 11th of December?
Yes. The reason we had not done Tuesdays because it's the start of Hanukkah. We don't have any applications in yet. Janice, do you remember what the deadline is for the meeting? I think it's, I think it's Thursday this week.
Well, Thursday, but this is off.
This week, okay. So we will know, we don't have any applications submitted for it, so if you have a conflict-
I never see any conflict on Mondays.
On Mondays, okay.
You know, I can work around it.
All right, well, we can, if you want to check with us, maybe in a, a week. We'll know for sure, or when it gets closer.
Not that big of a deal.
But we don't-
It's my hockey night.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's-
I can miss it every once in a while.
I don't think it's a big deal, meeting on the 12th.
Well, it could be a big, important for someone else, and we wouldn't want to schedule something.
We just moved two meetings for you.
Okay.
But not for religious reasons. At least I don't think.
I, you know, I just think someone can light the candles and still come to a planning board meeting.
It's not for us to decide.
Hot mic.
Enough trouble as it is.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. One abstention.
Good seeing you all.